All right. Let's all stand for the pleasure of that.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its republic, which is standing One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. And we, Father, come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a community, and nurture the bonds of community. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
Called this special meeting, the Hart County Commission, November the nineteenth. To order at this time, we have three items on the agenda, and then the sheriff has some discussion for us a little bit later. First is Derek Alt, Hart County Mayor's chairman, starting request for the December allocation of funds to be received in November.
The first thing, I had, um, is a statement I'd like to read. And then the second thing.
I have this one. I have this one. I don't need another paper if I have it.
Actually, I want to point out, these are things to address today. During a request. I didn't get a chance to state them, sorry. Derek Alt, Director for the Hart County Mayor's Board. Um, first thing I'd like to do is read the statement. Uh, we prepared a lot of questions recently, uh, in the discussion of the night in lieu of a board meeting. Uh, I'm going to address some of that and some other questions that we've been floating around.
Ask the, ask the chair. It's up to the chair.
Uh, you go ahead and read the statement. Again, many of the things that I see here is something that probably should go to the Board of HCAAA and the other agencies, uh, not at this meeting where we're looking at just a simple request for funding.
Well, the, so, the solutions section against the big part.
The what?
Uh, solution, number one.
Oh.
That would be.
Starting today. So I'd say, starting today.
Yeah. It would be, I guess, kind of the idea of what you mentioned, wanting to work on it. Um, so like, you know, how much did you want to start now?
Um, yeah. Personally, I think this is something that should be discussed by the Board. And then we'll bring that to the Commission once the Board's agreed upon what they want to do.
Well, yeah, I understand that, but I guess the Board can't plan itself.
Right, but the Board makes recommendations.
Yeah, I understand, but I'm trying to, I guess, wanted to see if, you know, we're gonna, do you want us to just make the cuts and then bring them back?
I want you to propose what you're going to do.
Okay.
And, and then bring those back if you think those are things that we need to act upon.
Right.
That's why we have Boards. And, uh, like I say, I know that there was no quorum with the Board the other night, but I certainly would like to see this coming from the Board. But I, I, you know, and certainly any statements that you'd like to make regarding, uh, what was brought up the last meeting and anything that might be helpful to us to make our decision to go ahead and advance the funding for December into November, I'm certainly willing to listen to it.
Hi, uh, just a statement. Uh, it's come to my attention, the statement I made in the last Commission meeting and also against the chairman, uh, for an article in the paper, it did cause a vote of public outcry. I could see where that, it didn't have the context, so I can see where that would be. Um, you know, taken the way it was. So this is to address questions surrounding that statement. Um, I wanted to provide some context from my reading. Additionally, I want to provide a response to some other questions and accusations directed towards the HCAAA as well as addressing misinformation that is currently circulating. So on November thirteenth, an open discussion was held at the HCAA building in lieu of scheduled meeting, um, of the Board of Directors. Due to not having quorum during this meeting, I did state that one of my recommendations that I intended to present to the Board of Directors for consideration is reducing cash supplements to West Hardy WMS and also Wardensville volunteer rescue class. Um, the ensuing argument within that meeting and subsequent public backlash has given me pause to address the points made. So prior to making that statement, I had developed a comparison of expenses versus revenues. I did this using reports from both the HCAAA and WHEMS. Um, it's during a nine-month period from January to September of 2024. Uh, that's the motion that said it ahead of my head. Um, but during that time period, WHEMS showed a net revenue of approximately seventy-five thousand, while EH, or the HCAAA operated a loss of about twenty-four thousand, nine-hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents. So then I produced a what-if scenario to demonstrate the effect of removing the cash payments. Now, just the cash payments, it doesn't include the supplemental stuff like the O two equipment and anything like that. Um, but the results of that comparison lowered the ETA DI ratio below one hundred percent, while also still allowing WHEMS to operate at a net revenue of approximately thirty thousand for that period. Uh, and also, that's what. This sheet was re-reviewed, some top numbers are the actuals, and then the bottom is the money after we did, um, cash payments. Now, I did do adjustments, so the eighty-nine thou, or the eighty-four thousand, five-hundred and thirty-nine that were removed, uh, from the ETA revenues in March, because zero balance exchange, the loan payment for county equipment, um, it's not really bad news or expensive, we hold the loan before we mention it. Um, and then the balance was corrected on the revenue sheet for August, so I took the five thousand dollars that was not received, um, and reflected that into the totals, and then the data, it was fulcrum expense reports that were presented to the Board of Directors. Um, so the core argument presented by representatives of WHEMS appeared to be that the HCA is operating inefficiently and wasting tax dollars, and I would like to address each of these points that they raised briefly, and if anyone would like to more give the other explanation, they may contact me at a convenience. So a statement was made that the HCA is hemorrhaging funding. So we pulled the statement of activity reports comparing fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four. Uh, we show an overall increase in expenses of three point seven-two percent, um, which is about fifty thousand dollars. Uh, additionally, fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, year-to-date, seems to be running on par. I think we're going to the one thousand dollars. Um, but in that period, we have increased service levels, um, and this increase was made in part to reduce the number of times that the resources from WHEMS had to be pulled to each side of the county. Additionally, health insurance premiums have increased substantially, which is beyond our control, and this talking point was addressed in a document presented in January titled Budgetary Concerns. Number two was, a question was raised about the three hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents in tears that day. This money was used to pay off ambulance lanes in the direction of the Board. Um, the payment shows as a capital expense, it won't actually show as an expenditure. I mean, in my world, I agree to go, I write a check, which is shared in extent, but in their world accounting, it goes somewhere else. Maybe it does. Um, a comparison was made between the service billing revenues of the HCAAA and WHEMS, which appeared to show that they were near parity, um, but data from reports given to the Board, the same reports that I used for the above, uh, shows that they've collected nearly thirty percent more in revenue, revenues from service billing in the weeks leading on end, in the period of January to September. Uh, there's severe mismanagement of the HCAAA. Um, we have addressed this from the past in the report responding, or response to the talking points, but I will say that the other sheet that I handed you, which is additional overtime by pay period, we do be, we do seem to be showing an average of about eighty-three hours per pay, uh, additional overtime, which is a significant amount, so we are working on a plan to reduce that. Uh, the HCA directors are not running calls. So we went ahead and pulled again for January to September, and in that time, the directors, uh, have completed a crew fifty-seven times, so only average five point two calls per month. Uh, and it does not include the times we respond to calls, uh, that were completed by other crews, we just want to set. Um, there has not been a job description presented for the director or the assistant director. We had those for you today. Um, the HCA is a business and is not being run like a business. We believe this to be an incorrect statement. The HCA is a government service. The goal of a business is to create a profit for the owner and investors. The goal of government is to provide important services to its citizens where it is not possible, practical, or ethical to generate a profit. We appreciate the contribution of WHEMS and provide EMS coverage to the Western Fortune County. We are not upset that they are able to generate a profit, but we would like to iterate that part of our service model includes equipment, supplies that we provide to them and WVRS, which allows them to project cost savings. Uh, the EMS Advisory Council meetings stopped when questions were asked about the HCAA operations. Um, in that time, we had received an email from Billy Drew Biddle in August, which indicated that WHEMS had voluntarily withdrew from their meeting regarding funding or other topics. Um, if this email was sent in error or no longer accurately reflects the feelings of WHEMS, we will gladly resume the Advisory Council meeting. The split of the fee will never be fifty-fifty, but it should be more fair so WHEMS can take care of their community. It has been our understanding that WHEMS has been taking care of their community very well under the current, uh, paradigm. If WHEMS feels that their care is so far and requires more equipment, supplies, et cetera, we will gladly help if requested or tempted. Um, so please refer again to the response to the talking points report that was released in September. Uh, HCA employees don't care because they aren't Hart County residents. Sixteen of the forty-four of our staff members are county residents. Of the full-time operational staff, six out of twelve are county residents. And secondly, I have personally been heavily involved in the envy of Eastern Hart County for nearly a decade, and I do find it is extremely insulting when it is implied that we do not care about our community. Um, the HCA says they are better than West Hardy because they get out faster, but ours to seen time are better. Um, so there's many variables, um, that affect EMS response. The time from dispatch to on-scene will always be weighted in favor of a more densely populated area because travel times are shorter. The standard measure of operational readiness is the time from dispatch to en route. The only practical way to, um, equal dispatch to scene time would be to station several work crews throughout the first two areas, which would be a cost prohibitive. WHEMS runs from home and are paid by HCA staff, are paid and set and stationed all day. Staffing model is employed by WHEMS, is not practical for use and allergic to the area, and has failed to provide adequate service in similar geographic regions than attempted it. Further, per twenty-nine CFR seven-eight-five point fourteen dash seventeen, all employees who are engaged to wait are required to get paid an hourly rate. Any employee not clearly and completely related to duty and provided any time to return is considered to be engaged to wait. It's not the place of the HCA to advise WHMS how to run their business, but as part of our commitment to transparency, we are compliant with the relevant laws. Finally, I would like to address the method in which some of these preceding comments were brought to my attention. The HCA has always been committed to transparency and accountability. We have published information in public sessions, often in multiple formats, and are regularly audited. Our meetings are generally open to the public, and our employees are instructed to maintain a professional demeanor in public and on social media with the understanding that their comments may be taken to represent the position of the HCAA, even if they are solely the opinion of the employee. While we understand that everyone has a right to their own opinion, publishing those opinions in a manner that is openly hostile towards the HCA is counterproductive towards our shared goal of providing the citizens of Hart County with efficient, reliable EMS service.
All right. Thank you for that, Eric. Is there any other comments, questions at this point in time?
Yeah, I think, I think I would have some. Um, and I think, um, so just a couple of things. I think, uh, what Commissioner Workman raised earlier is something to bring up and to bring up to you. So we're being asked to be fairly hands-on in this as far as the Commission. We have established an authority for that. Uh, you know, we're, so what I'm doing right now is reaching out to other counties to find out. So just like one example, where, where, where are these lower density? So this is point number twelve. Where are the lower-density areas, uh, that have failed to provide adequate services in similar geographic regions? So like, something like that would be needed because Mineral County, so I was talking to, uh, Mineral County, you know, colleague of mine, um, to try to learn what they're doing. You know, they have nine agencies throughout the county. Some of those agencies are in, uh, rural areas. Um, I think that we will continue to go down that road, uh, because right now, we're being asked to be pretty hands-on. I think that that wouldn't be the idea for where we ultimately land. I think that it would, I think that authority was established for a reason. The authority, so there, there are some things that I think need to change, and, uh, we're just going to follow that path and, and see where the changes lead. I think it has to, like, because we, we, we're going in circles. We've been going in cir, I, I really hate going in circles. I hate going in circles. So, and that's the reason, despite some, some wishes here, I think we need to say, I need to say some things today. Uh, we're going to follow that path, um, and move towards some changes at Hart County. Um, so for one, for, I, I, I'll give you one, so Mineral doesn't have an executive director but. Um, and it does allow that authority to be not serving one agency, which has to happen in Hart County. Like, our Authority Board needs to serve the county, and I think there's this feeling in Hart County, like each agency is its own, that we have an authority, and that's to serve the county. There, there needs to be this separation that takes place. Um, some of the questions and some of the things that were brought up, evidently, if you quoted things correctly, I didn't read these Facebook posts, uh, or wherever this came from, and I personally wasn't at this meeting. That's, you know, that's part of the reason there was no quorum. I did follow up on it after, but I was not able to attend that meeting. And I think that that meeting, we didn't get, we didn't, we didn't make much progress in it anyway, but there wasn't a quorum, so. Uh, on the issue, you know, on the, uh, specific issue on the, uh, subsidy, basically, I, I don't think that was completely wrong to raise, and we're following up on that even as we speak, because I've been continuously concerned with this dissolution clause. Um, and we'll find out, uh, getting a legal opinion on, on where, where, what we need to do from our end. I mean, it can be refused by an agency, that's a nonprofit agency, they can do what they need to do. We'll need to do what we need to do from our end to make sure county, county, county is protected. Uh, so, you know, that's where we are on this. I do think the data that's been provided on the overtime, that kind of cut, and I appreciate you saying that, that you're looking for how to, you know, where the, uh, exactly what you, so you will cut this?
Right, yeah.
This, this will all be cut?
Yeah, I have one detail on that.
Well, and that's one thing, because you put in there that we need, is that in this updated form where you say that it's irresponsible unless we give you a number, right? Did you, did you, is that in the updated form?
Well, to blindly start making cuts without, with the whole.
So are you requesting a number? Will you change that?
Uh, well, it sounds like it's your position that we make cuts and then.
And, and this is where it will be, well, walk me through what, what this will look like, because that's what we need. It's irresponsible of us when information's not provided to tell you what, you know, a number. So here's what I'm asking you. Here's what I'm asking you. Okay, so you're going to make this cut for this, for overtime. What does it look like on a daily basis in terms of calls come, how will it impact calls and responses? How does it actually impact?
So we're looking at, uh, the over-overtime now, yes, maybe, with it being about eighty-three hours per pay period, which would save fifty, sixty thousand in that time period.
That's not really answering the question. Like, day-to-day, how does it impact when a call comes in? How does it impact? Like, where will there be a hole? Like, does it increase the response times? And how, what's the average response? So this is connected to something, and I would think it's connected to a response time. If you cut this, are you saying your, and the average response time increases by one minute? Like, is that the number? Because that's what we really need to have, is something like that. Like, this is a cut. Well, what's it connected to? It's connected to a response time. So, like, this number being cut, how many minutes does that increase your response time on average? We have to have that type of information, and that's what I've been asking for for months, and we're not really getting that. We're not getting where a cut leads to a, a corresponding decrease in service and how that impacts your average. Like, we have to have that kind of information. And so it's irresponsible for us to be approving increases when we're not being given that connection.
I think if the next one, that's going to be decreasing workers on, so that's going to cut down the number of hours, it's just going to be full staff.
So how does it actually impact?
What I was saying is, so, starting today, uh, we are, we're going to realign the staffing a little bit and then drop our staffing to minimum requirement, which we faced the two full crews in April, or, sorry, July. Uh, we're going to pull that back to the one full-time ALS crew. Now, that's not to say we're cutting the second crew, I'm saying that the minimum staffing requirement will go back to when we have the one ALS crew. So in the event that, um, say somebody calls off, we don't have a part time, and if we can't get somebody to fill it at the ALS level, then we may not have the full second crew in the evening and stuff. Now, when they've been ironed office, we're going to go back like it was when we staffed the people, we would have them there for us. Um, this would be, um, you would probably see it in the after hours, uh, but, I mean, the potential's there, just, it is there to have one less crew. Um, but that's not to say it's all the time, because we're talking about the liabilities. For the most part, if it's a planned call off, um, we can usually plan ahead for it. If it's a, you know, somebody's sick or something like that, has to be sent home, then it's a little harder sometimes to pull somebody in that might have a plan. Um, I could say, I know, well, last night, for instance, we had two calls in a relatively short period of time, um, and I'd say we only had one crew, even if we had three, if we had three people, we could have probably found somebody, a third person, a fourth person, uh, to come out and respond for the same call. Um, one was in the fives, the other in the, I think it, I mean. Uh, and I know Saturday, Monday morning, um, you know, we had three calls in like twenty-five minutes.
Correct.
Um, so we're staffed to be able to handle two of them. I believe Company Eight ended up, out of Yellow Springs, they're the ones who responded.
So if, if there was, there were, it's potentially like West Hardy could have to respond, that's what is going to happen.
Yeah.
That we, so we have to have our county working together because they have to know that, like, that's, that's what's going to happen there. And it's, there, there's a requirement, there's an MOU sign, like, or this is just going to happen, right? Just so everyone understands, like, this is going to happen. So if you're not able to respond, then what, 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 what agency is next up in line?
Uh, well, it's.
Depending on where it's at?
It's based off the box card, yeah. So, uh, what, well, with the MOU that we signed with Wardensville, they're technically secondary to our, second year, um, or to our first year, you know, you know, lost through the valley. Uh, but then, uh, if they didn't have a crew, we were unable to completely staff that station, that's why it's West Hardy, it's next on the list. Um, I forget where the call off, Company Eight comes to, in seven one? Company Eight, uh, Yellow Springs, they would be fast down.
So what I'm hearing you say, there, there isn't a huge impact, like, it is better to cut this, like, it is better. It's better to cut this because the big complaint has been related to personnel costs. And I think that's, that complaint, uh, is a legitimate one because it is a concern. It's a personnel cost in terms of the way the business model that's being adopted looks to be unsustainable, looks to be unsustainable. So that is a legitimate. I don't think everything is legitimate, honestly, uh, that are brought up in meetings, I just don't. But I do think that one is, and we have to, you know, you, you sort of have to just sift out everything that's not legitimate, but do try to do your job and do a good job with that. And so what I'm hearing you say, I think that with, this should be done, and you should begin working on that, because I'm hearing that the cost savings make it worth it, and, and, um, people will still be served and not, because that's really, that's the main objective here, right? It's to serve people and respond to calls, like, that's what we're trying to do. That's why you can't just turn it on and down, because the overall objective is to respond to those calls, not to, you know, not to necessarily respond to every single, every single little, uh, little problem someone's had, has with how that's being done, but to respond to those calls, and it will not actually negatively impact it enough that we shouldn't do it. So that cost saving should occur, and I think we should start working on that.
Yeah.
But I think it's for the, I think this, these should be board, board issues, and we should have a very engaged board, and that's one thing that we've also done. Uh, so Peggy has created a board member, um, interest survey. I think that more board members will be added, need to be added to, uh, the Authority Board, because this should be, look, this, this, right, that, all of this should be discussed in the Authority Meeting, and then we learn what great work you guys have been doing coming from the. and then we learn what great work you guys are doing coming from the authority meeting, which I'm part of as well. But really, and isn't that what you're saying should be done?
Exactly, Commissioner Sheedrum represents the Hardy County County Commission on the HCEAA force. And of course, as we've all said right here, we hope that this board truly works together to meet EMS needs of our county. And this is one of the important things that we as a county commission, sure, it's nice to be apprised that some of those things are being considered, but I believe that the board should be the ones engaged in this discussion. And then if there are things that the county commission needs to do, then bring the county commission in with specific types of things, rather than to doing the work that the board is certainly capable of doing.
We need to try to survive that, also the West Hardy. Because we, we get the same effect, and they're coming direct to us rather than going through the authority.
That's true, that's true, and that's a great point.
And Wardensville, same thing, you know, yes. Anyway, uh, I think we can end this discussion here and move forward with the request that is before us. I'd entertain a motion that we approve the December allocation to be given to HCEAA in November with the three pay periods, and the amount of that will be, what is that?
Sixty-five thousand, right?
Sixty-five, seventy-five.
We're.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
That's what we gave you last week.
Seventy-five.
I thought this was the December allocation.
This is December.
So this is sixty-five thousand.
Plus the ten.
I mean, that's what this, that's what the December allocation would be. So we're basically just moving up time today, is that, is that correct? Isn't that correct? We're moving up time today, and we're giving the December allocation today rather than December. That's what's actually being done.
Right here's, got it down, sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five?
Well, the dollars for it, I, the ten thousand.
And that's, that's ten thousand plus, so it's seventy-five thousand. I'd entertain a motion for that, though.
Just a little bit.
It's seventy-five because of the West Hardy allocation, correct? Okay.
So, then moving to the second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we proceed to vote all this in favor, second by saying aye, aye, three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carried. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Wendy Branson in our Dogtown grant.
I'm blessed to be right here while.
Okay, that's fine.
How about that?
Thank you.
You're welcome, I won't, I won't kick you out. We did receive, um, news last night from Teresa Brunner from the Foho, the Stanton, the Westmore Stanton Grant, for the Dogtown, she finally got all of our, thank you. She finally got all of our paperwork in line, and she will be mailing, we do not have the money yet. She will be mailing a check for twenty-four thousand dollars for our improvement grant they have approved.
Okay. I think this week, like, she's mailing?
When will it be received?
She told me that she's going to be mailing it today, and that the tracking, she will send me the tracking information as soon as she gets it mailed, and it will require my signature. So, um, I would assume that I should have it by Friday.
And, uh, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a brand new grant for Hardy County?
Yes.
We haven't received this.
No, we applied for it last year, um, and they had a small amount that they appropriated, and we did not get funded for it.
So this is valued being added by Hardy County right now, right at this moment? Okay, that's, that's. Yep. Um, yeah. Uh, we should put that, um, contract, right, on our December meeting?
I have it on our file, yeah.
And we have received a, a very generous filling profit, uh, proposal to basically, uh, fill the additional needs above that twenty-four thousand for improvements to the Dogtown, which, uh, will be done if, uh, everything goes through and the contract's approved, can be done by the first of the year or shortly thereafter. Which is good news.
And some of this work, we can implement as soon as the contract is approved, some of this work can implement immediately. Some things depend on, it's going to depend on Mother Nature as far as what, what our weather is going to entail. But this will definitely be, um, this is, once again, I stress, it's just an improvement grant, not to buy privilege, thanks, it's to improve the structure, the, the blueprint, the blueprint of the building.
What do you mean, the motion's approved?
Well, some, I just wanted to, you know, there's no motion, I just wanted to give you an update. Because I, there are some, I've heard some things, and some people think that we've already had the money, and that was just what I want to clear the air, that we, we'll be getting the money. No, no, nothing to approve.
And kind of in anticipation of improved facilities, so a, uh, basically volunteer position title has been created for a animal care, animal caretaker cleaner, uh, to help out at the Dogtown along with a, an application form specifically for, uh, the attendant job, uh, which I think will move forward, uh, some of our efforts to try to do some additional things with the Dogtown above beyond just cleaning and care. So those documents will be considered.
The, uh, second thing you said about the attendant position?
Yes.
Can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, uh, we've created a, basically a position title here with a job description, we're cleaner caretaker, uh, and animal care. And to supplement that, we've also created a basic job application for that specific, uh, roles that's described, uh, in the job description, uh, the kind of companion pieces, but we have to share that with you.
I have a question about the, uh, the quote, the simpleton, forty-six thousand dollars. And I saw the list of the, uh, you know, the items that would entail. Was this an open bid? Or was it just a, a simpleton was contacted?
We wanted to find out just exactly what kind of improvements needed to be made, uh, to the existing facilities with some parameters or guidelines, and to get some idea of what was there. Uh, so far as the open bid process, uh, we had the grant, which was received with the gift that was made known to us, the philanthropic gift, uh, we were able to circumvent any additional, um, bids, as it were, uh, on that if, if we accept the contract as presented on, at the December meeting.
Do you, are there contracting agencies or funds contacting you? Or are you just going with the one?
We, we may go with just the one, but, uh, we certainly could see if there are others that are out there that might want to put in, in on that.
Well, considering the fact that the philanthropic gift you're referring to is under control of the state's ID, and at her discretion, the release of the funds.
Sure.
I would highly recommend that another bid be pursued because that's going to take twenty-two thousand or fifty thousand, according to, based on what the cost of this one bid is. And also, too, what about the panel that was appointed to oversee the grant? What, what is the?
I'm not sure what the status of that group is at this point in time.
I have not called a meeting yet, however, I did talk to Mr. Pendleton last week, and I told him as soon as we got the information, I felt there was really no need to have a meeting until I knew when we were going to get the money because it's all speculation. So I will be calling a meeting within the next two weeks, probably not next week because of deer season, but it'll be the week following, and you will get a notification.
And we did have that conversation, I, I was wanting to clarify the case about.
Steve, can I clarify something as well? The person who gave that philanthropic, what's this done like yesterday? But you're saying this, and where, where, where should we go with that?
Well, I mean, according to the letter that I provided, and she also got a copy of that letter, she read it even when I sent it out, with the, there's been a panel within the main society that was created.
Hasn't been created?
Yeah, to oversee, in the person panel that was created, to oversee any request from the county, you know, for the, with the release of that money. And, you know, she's aware of that, and there has to be a process with that, and that's just accountable to you on our end, you know, well, together. So I, you know, I don't, no instructions can start until the contractor, whoever that is, is ready to cut. You know, uh, we just want to make sure that the money is spent responsibly, and that, you know, there would recommend more, seeking more bids, and this is one, uh, for forty-six thousand. And, uh, you know, that's only twenty-eight thousand of the money, we talked about the heating system. You know, and my question about the panel is exactly what was the purpose of that panel? And Wendy's, you know, she's, we talked about, you know, setting up a meeting, but my question is exactly what is the responsibility of that panel in relation to the grant?
Well, I guess, according to bid proposal, is basically he and I turned and looked it over and come up with the list of materials and everything that's needed. So now we have what we need to actually go to bid if we need to do that round. Up until then, we'd have nothing, nobody.
But just, yeah.
I basically asked Jeremy to come out, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but just to clear the air, I basically asked Jeremy to come out and say, this is our building, as a contractor, what do you think needs, what are the addresses? I don't know everything that needs to be addressed. Um, I'm not a contractor. So I said, look it over and see what, everything that you feel, this is a wish list, not saying that we're going to go with all forty-six thousand dollars of, of his bid. That's why we had him to do this, that's why we have the panel, then the panel can discuss, and then we can pick and choose what to hear and how for our improvement to the building.
Yeah, and it's by all explanation, so this is on our December meeting. So with, the panel will, we will, because we have a contract we could potentially sign at this December meeting. And so beginning the panel would go ahead and look at that, and in the meantime, we can get other bids out that we would also have back by that December meeting. Because it, it'd be forced, it could be done at the December meeting where we can, we can approach someone to go and start this work. And that's just why I wonder, because there are, there are these voices that people would call me, and they're wanting this, they, they think we should already be starting, starting to roll out this project, but, but I think, like, that could be pulled off, right? Like, we can do all of that, I think we can do all of that. So, okay, but it is on the December meeting agenda.
I think there was some confusion, you know, she went out of where, I didn't even know about the meeting that day until Wendy and I talked Friday. And we didn't know a thing about this bid until yesterday, we had to another person. And so I want to say that it created confusion, and that's why I wanted to ask some questions and see what the panel did. I mean, well, it gave the impression that things were done way ahead of the.
I think.
And so that's not the case, obviously.
No, no, no.
That was the.
Gotcha, sure, I understand.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and part of that grant requires that we have a conflict of interest policy adopted.
Not that particular grant, it's actually another grant, sorry, we're changing gears.
Okay.
It is for the USDA grant for our police carer, that is, um, that will be receiving the monies for, um, that has to be approved in order for us to have that money released.
Mr. Clark, does this have to be read three times?
Yeah.
Before it's adopted? It is pretty much a standard conflict of interest policy outlining the ethical guidelines and principles public employees and officials in Hardy County's ensuing, their decisions and actions are impartial and uphold public trust. Below is the summary of the key provisions. Purpose and scope, uh, public employment is a public trust requiring independence, partiality to maintain public confidence. Public employees' decisions must be free from undue influence, favoritism, and threats. The policy aims to define minimal ethical standards, eliminate conflicts of interest, and maintain the integrity of government. Key principles, one, prohibition of personal gain, public employees must not use their position for personal gain beyond their lawful salary and benefits. Impartiality, decisions must prioritize public welfare over narrow economic or political interests. Three, ethical standards, high moral and ethical standards are necessary for public confidence and governance. Handling conflicts of interest, conflicts inherent to part-time public service do not automatically disqualify employees from decision-making responsibilities. When a conflict becomes personal, the employee should request to abstain from acting on the matter. Definitions include compensation to include any financial benefit, including reimbursements for necessary work-related expenses for the employee and anyone serving the county under contract hire regardless of its form, immediate family, including spouse, or if residing with the individual, dependent children, and dependent parents. Public employee refers to both full-time and part-time employees, public official, any official holding an elected position. That is the policy as stated, meeting all requirements of the USDA grants. I'd entertain a motion to approve the conflict of interest policy as presented. Second, then moving to the second, any further discussion? Any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we proceed to vote all this in favor, second by saying aye. Three ayes, the ayes have it, motion carried. Mr. Clerk, is there any other business to come forward to town commission at this special meeting? Sheriff Austin, you had something you wanted to bring up with the commission at this time?
Yeah, the last big work we're on, track to hire Jordan Hope, Phil Evans, we have, we're starting him on December first, I talked to you about last time I was in there.
Yes.
And I want to give you the update on our task force, I didn't have the information, the last county commission, I got a map of them since then. Last month, Michael Anthony Matthews, thirty-five years old, Baltimore, Maryland, was sentenced to a hundred months in federal prison here in West Virginia. He was a source of fentanyl in the Northfield, Petersburg area. And Matthews was by a large quantity of fentanyl from his home in Baltimore, and others in this area, domesticated, yielded approximately nine thousand fentanyl pills with a total drug weight of approximately over two kilograms of fentanyl. So he's been stopped, you have the major source coming into this area of fentanyl. And also our task force has been working, North Virginia task force, serves, serves for in Sugar Grove, and sees, um, large quantity of CHC and psychedelic mushrooms, stems from a, um, production sold in, in Augusta County, also a residence in the Sugar Grove area, was supplying that in this area too, but directly in Hardy County, it was all tied together. I just want to give you an update for the, have that, the last meeting. We're continuing to do, you know, the big drug cases, getting a lot of the out-of-state people, the major suppliers of this area.
Seems it never ends. All right, anything else? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn, only second, moving to the second, we always in favor, second by saying aye, aye. The ayes have it, meeting adjourned.